Heather Gardner. Here. Javier Nera.
Present.
Sandino Thompson. Joanne Davis.
Here.
Mike Mines.
Here.
Steve Mason.
Notice the meeting was properly posted on July fifteenth, twenty twenty five. For purposes of this agenda, actually means any of the following: amending, approving. Approving as amended, deferring, denying, giving instructions to staff. Making a recommendation to another public body, receiving documents or presentations. Referring to committee reconsidering, reopening, returning, or striking the item. Thank you. My name is Steve Mason. I have the pleasure of chairing this oversight committee. I believe the next item is a discussion and approval action regarding the minutes of May twenty twenty. Twenty twenty five. Thoughts?
Second.
Is there any discussion from the committee? Any discussion from the public? Cassie, let's see how we vote. The minutes passed. Thank you. Item two is recurring items. Discussion and possible action regarding the planning, design, management, and construction of the Nebo-Columb County Adult Detention Center and Behavioral Care Center requested by the board. Hi Stacy. How was your vacation?
Good afternoon. Not long enough.
We're glad you're back.
I believe attached to your agenda was our expense report, which is where we normally start with this. As you can see, we've paid out eighteen and a half million. With the bill sitting on my desk, we're about a little over nineteen million on the new jail. And have a balance of about two hundred and eighteen million of bonds that we haven't released yet, plus interest. And then on the ARPA project. About eight, eight million dollars expended there. Another sixty thousand pending. I'll be glad to answer any questions about expenditures.
Questions from the committee? Stacy, can you help us understand the owner's representative, maybe a one million and change?
Yeah, the owner's rep was hired to help us with the entire ARPA program, which was close to eighty million dollars. This is about, this behavioral project's about half of that. So there was. Almost twenty projects, I think. So we put out an RFP and got us an owner's rep. And purchasing negotiated that contract. I think it was just a lender four percent total. There's about four components in that contract. There's a federal compliance component. Then they do some design review, some construction oversight, and then help us with the payments. Once that overall contract, which was a little something contract was, was inked by the Board of County Commissioners, then the owner's rep went back and broke his fee out on every project. And I think he got pretty close, depending on the amount of effort he had to put in. He may come out better on some projects, not so good on others, but. This has been pretty challenging projects. I, I think his fee's in line. We're glad to have him. He's doing a good job.
Any questions about the owner's rep? You got some construction people here if you have interest. I'm gonna ask something. Okay, who is the owner's rep?
Bill White and Associates.
Okay, other questions from the committee or the public? I don't see an action item under item two, so if there's no more comment, we'll move on to item three. Discussion and possible action regarding an update complaint on the behavioral care center. No progress.
Josh Patterson, Flint Co. We're making progress out at the BCC. Had a very, very wet spring, so. But we're finally moving now. We've got. Foundations going in about over seventy-five percent of the building site, so those will be finishing up here shortly. The first slab-on-grade will pour next Tuesday. And then there's six total slab-on-grades in the jobs, so those will start moving around. We're looking at mobilizing the structural steel guy by the end of August. We'll start, start that. The, the mason, he'll start here in a couple of weeks. He's done a little bit of masonry to get up to the slab-on-grade level for the slab, and he'll come in to finish out the hardened rooms in each pod. Underground plumbing is ongoing to support the slab-on-grades. Underground electrical has started as well. And, and then. You know, framing, exterior framing will start going about middle of September as the structural steel guy starts flowing across the buildings. Utilities have been going here for. For a while now. We've gotten most of the. Waterline in. We're getting ready to start storm, and then we'll move to the sanitary lines. So. We are. You know, looking for structural top out here in the fourth quarter of this year. Look to be substantially, substantially dry by the end of the year. And then looking at permanent power, quarter one of twenty-six, and we'll move into finishes at that point.
I have a question.
Yeah.
How many delayed days did we get because of the rain? And what's your guesstimation that we'll make those up?
So, right now, we've got, from, we're at a October twenty-eighth substantial completion date. Our original was. September thirtieth. So we've had, we've, we've felt incurred about a month worth of delays between the weather. We had the soil conditions that came up last time we were here, so those were kind of concurrent delays. So we've had about, you know, that month impact. And that's right now what we're holding is October twenty-eighth substantial completion, and then put the final in December of twenty-six.
Thank you.
When we, when, I think it was your last time we talked, your contingency had been reduced to almost nothing by some. I guess some overages in the initial buyout, and you were working to find some ways to reduce other costs to restore some of that. Any update on where we are within that process, and where does our contingency now sit?
So contingency, I believe, is sitting, I want to say it's sitting around three hundred thousand is kind of where we've landed through some different, you know, value analysis type things that have been approved. So we're sitting, sitting about three hundred thousand.
On a forty million dollar?
Yeah, forty-four million.
How does that feel to you?
It feels a little light. So, yeah.
Well, but that's more than you had, I think, the last time.
Yeah, it was, it was zero last time.
It was zero, yeah. That's good. You've been able to preserve some.
Yeah.
Other committee comments? Public comments? Okay. We're done with item three, behavioral care. Item four is discussion and possible action regarding an update complaint on the Nebo-Columb County Detention Center.
Yeah. Detention Center. Right now, we're, we've, I think we presented a budget at the last meeting. And since then, we've kind of reached out to another. Electrical mechanical estimator to get another opinion. We've gotten that here, or we're kind of reconciling that this week. It looks like, looks like everything's holding. Some buckets, you know, may move a little bit out of this bucket into that bucket, but in general, we're still holding. You know, right at that, you know, right under the seven hundred million mark for the, the full facility and that six hundred and twenty million mark for the eighteen hundred bed facility, so.
Is that pricing process ongoing or kind of on hold as, or complete and waiting for further direction or?
Yes, pretty, pretty complete. This will kind of finalize some things here. That's where Mike's at right now, actually, is in that reconciliation meeting. And then, you know, then we'll kind of put a pause on that until we, you know, decide what we're doing from there.
I have a question. Will you be doing any sort of recalculation prior to buyout? Given that there's a long time between now and the actual construction time?
Yeah, we'll need to, as we identify, you know, what, what we're targeting. We'll need to. Yeah, put our crystal ball on of, you know, what do we think the, the market's going to be doing in, you know, a year from now, two years from now type deal. Quite a crystal ball right now with some of the. You know, tariff issues, political issues that are going on, so. But we'll, yes, once we kind of understand where we're heading, we'll need to, we'll need to understand that this pricing that we've done today is really just through September of two thousand twenty-five. And so, you know, if we're, if we're thinking September two thousand twenty-six, you know, there's a year's worth of, you know, potential escalation there.
So remind me, the, which scopes of site work have been either performed or anticipated so far? You guys did a certain amount of site work for the entire site. Is that correct?
No, all the site work wise has been limited to the limits of the Behavioral Care Center. And that's kind of, we've got a fence kind of drawn in the, not drawn, it's physically a place out there at those limits. And that's, that's the earthwork we've, we've bought today. We've got some of our surplus dirt we've put on the jail site. But as far as real scope of work on the actual jail proper site, we haven't, we haven't done anything today.
And none of the infrastructure, I guess, as it stands at this point, would sort of spill over or be dual use?
The, the only piece of infrastructure that kind of leaves our behavioral care limits is the sanitary line. It leaves our behavioral care limits, and it goes to the north, you know, a few hundred feet, and then actually crosses over Crooked Creek there to tie in. And so that, you know, to make the behavioral care operable, we've got to run that line for that sanitary line.
Okay, yeah, no power infrastructure or anything. I mean, this kind of, they're kind of separate.
Separate, yeah.
Do you anticipate that the soil condition issue that you ran into on the Behavioral Care Center is going to persist on the jail site? And if yes, have you tried to predict in advance how that's going to change your costs?
I don't know if we're anticipating that. We don't have, as we move into the jail site, that structure's on piers. Versus the behavioral care is all on spread footings with a four-foot thick pad. So there's a couple of things going on there. The piers itself will, from a structure standpoint, will help that out. The other thing that we do have included in our price is we've got some stabilization of the pad from a, more from a means and method things of. To, when we go to build the jail, we're going to be walking these three and four hundred ton cranes all over the place to set the precast. So we need a really solid foundation. So we're going to, we've already got some of that. You know, built into the cost if, if we were to kind of incur in that pad location.
Thank you. Summarizing some information you've provided us before, and Mike gives us more detail, and the committee might have some questions. In April, we heard for two thousand three hundred and twenty-eight beds, six hundred and ninety-eight million. And we were told eighteen hundred beds was six hundred and nineteen million. And that number was good through starting this September. And just a wild guess, apply about four percent inflation annually thereafter. That's what you told us, and just kind of where we're at. Cost-wise, is there any questions? Do you have any more details provided than?
I don't know if there's any more details to that, but, yeah, that's where we're still sitting and. In, I think. You know, the four percent, you know, seems reasonable today. Let's see what the future holds, but that's a, just a reasonable, kind of responsible guess at this point.
Other committee comments, questions, public comments? Okay. Thanks, Josh.
Thank you.
Item five is discussion and possible action to receive an update regarding the RFP for Behavioral Care Operator Services and Determined Board Engagement Recommendations.
That RFP's in pretty good shape. We're having one more expert look at it. Next week. And once we get their changes put in, as far as I'm concerned, it's ready to go on the street early August. And we'll give them probably sixty days to answer it. And we'll have some interviews to determine who the winner is in the fall. We actually need that person onboard working with Flint Co. by the end of the year in order to keep on schedule. So the commissioners are well, are well aware of that schedule and trying to make it happen. They'll appoint a committee to do the interviews at some point. And I don't know how they're going to handle that. Commissioner might even answer that.
Before you leave, when you talk about interviews, are you talking about evaluation of proposals?
I was actually talking about in-person interviews. If we get a lot of responses, we'll have to shortlisting. I'm not going to interview every RFP that comes in, so there's a two-step process, shortlist and then face-to-face interviews. So the committee will have to do both tasks, depending on how many responses we get.
Okay.
So Ms. Davis, just to add on a little bit to that. The thought is to develop the matrix of which each will be examined by. And from there, we will take the best three or five and interview those individuals on which would we best. Now, I've had discussions with the National Commission on Correctional Healthcare. They're the ones that I'm asking to look at this RFP. When I met with them in Philadelphia two weeks ago, one of the things that they told me was writing these things ourselves without some sort of correctional healthcare professional taking a look at them. A lot of times, there are things that are missed, especially when it comes to the way that we're doing it. We're not setting, you know, a new standard or anything like that by having these individuals come in in a construction stage and pick and help us develop our construction and how to set this thing up. Nothing different. But if we're not very careful with RFP, what they warned me about was the, the scope creep and mission creep and everything could possibly happen missing. So with this National Commission on Correctional Healthcare looking at this, they do this for all fifty states across the country. They're very well versed in mental health care across the country. They've actually got standards. They've got accreditations. They're very much like ACA or anything like that. I've reached out to them as of today, again today, to discuss with them, looking at our RFP. There will be a little bit of a cost with that. I think it'll probably, in the grand scheme of things, it'll be nothing. Also, in the grand scheme of things, I think it'll be worth every penny. Anything else? Any questions about that?
I have a question, and maybe it's for Stacy. Why do we need the consultant, the operator, to finish the construction? What's, we need some information from them?
Yeah, things like nurse call stations, medical records. There's some components to this that the operator needs to select, not me, not Flint Co. We need them onboard to select so that we have a very good operation going. And once they select their systems, then Flint Co. will install them.
Other questions from the committee or the public? Commissioner Davidson, we're, thank you for joining us. Mr. Pettits from Commissioner's office, Charleston Commissioner's office, Chamber being here. Thanks for your interest in joining us. We're thrilled you're here. Item five is discussion and possible. Oh, I just did five. Item six is discussion and possible action regarding new jail bond funds and potential spending options.
Would you put that up on the screen? We've got it up on the screen, but I'm going to hand it out to you as well. Kurt with HOK is going to lead this presentation, and Flint Co.'s here to back him up with any other questions.
Good afternoon, Kurt Partey with HOK. So what's on the screen is taking the entire site that we designed and developing, showing how it could develop, be developed in different phases. You know, looking at the amount of bond funds that could be available. Immediately, we, we wanted to kind of, you know, break apart the parts of the building that would make the most sense to initially construct. So, so that's what this is, is trying to do. Now, the purple down at the bottom is the Behavioral Care Center, so that is obviously already under construction. And then Phase two A and two B are next. And two A is the small purple bubble over to the right really is about. We're trying to, to develop the site further, the rest of the site, not the Behavioral Care Center site. That's about thirteen million dollars, and, and Flint Co. and Stacy and the team have been looking at, you know, what that might contain. So that's likely going to be extension of storm sewer across our site, moving an existing storm sewer that will need to be moved in the future. As we, as the project moves into construction further down the road. And then also cleaning up the site, putting up construction fence. And, you know, moving some dirt around. And then also kind of establishing an initial road on the south side, which is adjacent to the, the adjacent property owner. That would serve Phase two B. And Phase two B is everything in red. There's the darker red, there's the lighter red. So the darker red are the building pieces. That would become part of Phase two B. And that includes in the lower left corner, the, the intake booking vehicle, Sallyport, transport area. As, as well as release area of the jail facility. And then next to that is the new kitchen facility that would serve the entire complex once it's completed. Adjacent to that is warehouse space. And finally, adjacent to that is the new laundry that would serve the entire facility. And then up above the intake booking center at the lower southwest, just above that is one of the housing units. That we're still talking about, would that be built out entirely, or would we shell that out at this point? I think we're going through some cost numbers right. Uh, I think we're going through some cost numbers right now to figure out how far we would take that. That particular unit is a behavioral health, incarcerated behavioral health unit. So it would be, uh, single cells in that area that could be available, uh, as this initial Phase 2A is constructed. And then you see that kind of thicker red line that goes up to the north to the smaller area. That's the central utility plant, uh, in red up there on its own. That's the piece that, you know, that that serves the entire building. So we're currently looking at, uh, building out the entire central utility plant, uh, that would serve the entire structure. Uh, and then connecting, um, for that to the Phase 2B via an underground, some underground piping that would need to connect to that. Underground, um, piping, underground, um, water and and electrical. Then the lighter, the lighter red, uh, involves, uh, the initial roadway that would run along the south side of our, uh, the new, uh, detention center project. Uh, and that will lead into the kitchen area, the dock area, the maintenance warehouse area. Uh, and and also provide, uh, initial parking for those that, you know, that would be at this facility. Um, that, and then it would connect back to, uh, Grand on the on the right. And then on the left side of the, uh, vehicle Sallyport is also some parking. Uh, and the roadway that would be extended from the left side of the Behavioral Care Center up to the vehicle Sallyport. So, you know, that's, that's how this is being set up. The the thought here is get this piece of the project completed with available funds. Um, this would serve the Behavioral Care Center well. Uh, you could, uh, bring your, um, your intake booking transfer center out here initially. Uh, and everything would be done here. Uh, that would be able to work closely with the Behavioral Care Center building being there. It would provide, uh, everyone the ability to bring detainees directly to this facility. Where they could be diverted directly to the BCC if that's how they are assessed. Or there would be holding cells in the intake center and adjacent to it. That would, uh, enable them to be, um, taken back to the downtown jail facility should they be held and detained. So that's kind of the the general idea. Uh, also, the food service, uh, new food service and the new laundry would also serve the Behavioral Care Center initially. Uh, of course, those would serve the entire jail facility. So, you know, they wouldn't be in full use until that whole thing is complete. But it would also be, it would be used very well right now to to service the Behavioral Care Center. Any comments on any of that?
What's the cost for 2B?
Um, and we're targeting 200 million, I believe, is is kind of our our goal. It's about 155,000 square feet of space. It includes the full utility, a central utility plant, um, that would service the entire facility.
So you're basically building out all the back of house and support prior to the construction of the balance of the facility?
And and trying to leave Flintco, you know, a decent way to still get those heavy cranes that that Josh talked about. Uh, in and be able to construct all those precast cells and the tilt-up panels and and all that kind of stuff as well. Yes.
Thank you.
How do the people that operate, I guess, the existing jail and this one feel about the way this would function? Bringing, you bring all people that are arrested here, then keep some of them and then retransport them downtown and. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah, we need to have more conversations with them as as this moves forward. Their current intake facilities are wholly inadequate. Um, but, you know, we do need to have additional discussions with them to see how they feel about all the functions. Uh, and and how much of those would be coming out here. Um, you know, the space at the intake booking center is kind of the nucleus of a detention center. Uh, and and since the current facility is, um, you know, very small for for what they do. It doesn't accommodate any of the community services folks, the diversion folks. Uh, or all of those support facilities that are going to be used to make the diversion center and the Behavioral Care Center actually work. So the thought is that that all, that would help all of this really work well initially, uh, just to get it, get it going. Uh, but we need to have additional discussions with them on on how that works.
2B includes space for those diversion folks and offices?
Yes, there's, there's, there's office spaces for the diversion, uh, group. There's additional office space for the community services, uh, other community services that would also have space out here.
And then three becomes housing and the main entry and the courtrooms and.
Correct, so, you know, um.
Remind me, yeah, just remind me.
Phase three, sure, let me go on.
Those major chunks of which, which.
Great point.
Phase they're in.
So Phase three is the green. And so that's, as you can tell, that's pretty much all of the housing, uh, for the for the facility with the exception of one unit. Um, so that would include the the front lobby, uh, the the jail administration space, the training center, uh, the courtrooms. Um, and support spaces and then all the different housing units. So you've got your maximum security, your, you know, minimum security medium. You also have your behavioral hair care, uh, housing as well as your infirmary and medical center. So all of that would be part of Phase three.
So recapping what I'm understanding is that this Phase 2A are these new jail bond funds that are available would be serving that purpose? And that would be the site work that would be for 2B and three or just 2B?
So the Phase 2A, I think, would be bond funds that have already been sold.
Right, but.
Phase 2B would be the remainder that's Phase 2A.
Phase 2A is the site work just for 2B?
No, no, Phase 2A is is really ancillary stuff. So it's it's really, um, moving utilities out of the way, things of that nature and setting the site up for construction. Phase 2B is the new roadway along the south side and the parking, uh, and the additional grading and additional utilities and electrical that would come in.
Oh, I want to ask this a different way. Uh, so is what's being proposed in 2A essentially the site work? So not the paving necessarily, but the site work, the prep work for the entire site?
For the entire site, yes.
Like including what Flintco just discussed, where they're going across the entire site to make sure that all the soil is prepared? Or is that delineated?
Taken into a building pad or just subgrade or what are your thoughts there?
Yeah, we're still kind of working that idea out with the civil engineer. Um, but at least some just general cut and fill. There's, there's a ton of cut on the east side of this project, a lot of fill on the west side, so at least getting that cut and fill. Um, we've kind of talked about the building pad piece and, you know, how much of that do we want to do if it sits for a year or two years? And is that fruitful money or not? So we're working through that. But in general, the 2A, um, we're talking about getting the utilities in for the site. At least the mains, we may leave off, you know, branch lines that would run, you know, to connect to the building. But get the the main infrastructure in place from a utility standpoint. Get just the demo, get the site cleaned up, you know, all the old roads out of there, the old tires, tree, you know, get it cleaned up and prepped and ready for construction. There's a, a pretty large retaining wall on the, uh, south side of that that butts up to lock supply. We would get that retaining wall put in place. Um, right now, some of those utilities from lock supply run, you know, right through the middle of the project sites, getting that routed out. Just basically getting that site prepped and ready. Hey, it's time to do construction. We don't have a bunch of kind of enabling work, if you will, to get started.
I think this is a really great approach to something we've talked about, about how to use initial funds that we have available. And then, uh, with this new Phase A, 2A, I think it'd be interesting to know what that entire scope entails. If there's a way to kind of break these chunks out.
Yeah, we're working on breaking that out right now. That I think, I think there's about $13 million available in those funds. So we're kind of shaping that, uh, scope right now to to work that in. And then, um, and then identifying the 2B, uh, piece. Um, we're, we're honing in on that right now as well. It's going to be under 200 million, but we're trying to get that ROM a little bit tighter, so.
How many square feet in 2B and how many, you call them beds? How many inmates could be housed in the one housing unit that's being built?
Yeah, the the square footage of 2B is about 255,000 square feet. And, uh, the number of beds would be about 80.
Uh, one other question to kind of piggyback on what Steve had asked earlier, and I'm sure you're already going to do this through diligence. But just understanding the safety risks involved with bringing them to the site and then taking them back to the site. And given the fact that I, what I understand is that the staff, um, is pretty bleak currently. And is there enough staff to do that additional work? You know, just some rhetorical questions potentially discussed.
That's a great question. You know, we started looking at this option about two weeks ago. So we just wanted to make, to see first off, if it had legs, that that people are interested in doing this. And I think the next step is sitting down with them and going through those details because that's an excellent detail that needs to be discussed. Yes.
When we started the design of this new, the entire new facility, one of the major goals was to do, to be able to do diversion and behavioral health differently. Does doing 2B accomplish most of what that original vision wanted to do? And is that one way to think about it and sell it? We don't, we can't house everybody that we were housing downtown, but we do get to implement. But you can probably describe it better than I, the diversion goal or to get to implement the diversion goals and the behavioral health. Treatment goals that we always had for the project.
Yeah, I, I, so that's a great question. Um, the intake booking, release, diversion piece that connects to the Behavioral Care Center is exactly that. So providing spaces for diversion hub and for other community services that are going to have space here enables them. To step into the intake process earlier and be there when someone actually gets, uh, into the holding facility as well. So that they can divert them and start figuring out where they can go so they don't have to be housed in the jail. So you may have people that are here, uh, you know, for 24 hours that can now, you know, be earmarked to be, to go to a specific. Community service organization within your community and they do not have to go to the downtown jail. That's the hope. Um, some of them will definitely go over to the Behavioral Care Center, right? So having that Behavioral Care Center right next door, uh, will enable if someone goes into and is assessed. And that assessment shows that, um, they've committed a minor crime. Uh, they have some behavioral health issues that need to, that maybe can be addressed in the Behavioral Care Center. Then they go directly there and not to your downtown jail. So it does a lot. Yeah, it really gets the process started.
Isn't a court appearance often a part of that diversion process? And there wouldn't be a place to do that here. Could you find a room to to do that somewhere or is that even necessary?
So initially, if someone's assessed and they're taken to the Behavioral Care Center, that court appearance, um, may or might, may not be needed. So, you know, that part, it depends on the, on each individual. Um, for, uh, the, uh, first appearance, we do have our first appearance courtroom built into this intake center. So so if that has to happen, there's space for them to do that.
I have a question that may be for both Stacy and Josh. When would you have to have be released on doing 2A, 2B? And be able to make sure that we've spent the funds in the allotted time?
Um, the time is up on that $10 million in May of '26. As far as the arbitrage rules, I guess, when we sold the bonds.
Okay.
The other bonds haven't been sold yet, so we've got time on that or we're not constrained by time. It's just, do we like the concept or not?
It's just the $10 million that's currently constrained.
Yes.
But you could spend that on 2A by then or maybe most of it?
Uh, one other potential thought. If you wanted to try to squeeze out more housing, since you wouldn't need the entirety of the kitchen and the kitchen is usually a really high cost for density. Could you explore an option to have a partial kitchen to serve what's existing and fully functional now? And then use the extra funds that would have built out the entirety of the kitchen that you don't need yet to maybe add more housing, at least for the interim?
Well, I think, so building the shelf space for the kitchen initially and not outfit fitting all of it.
Just whatever is needed for now.
Yeah, um, you know, I think the next step is to sit down with the operators of the jail and and asking them what makes the most sense to them. I think that's one way to approach it and I think that would help us figure out. I mean, that one, you know, housing unit right on the end of the red on the right side there, it seems like that would be really easy to add into this, right? Which we're, but we're waiting, we want to make sure that the numbers are right for what we already have in red. If there were a way to add that into it, that would be the the obvious choice. And I think we, uh, but we also need to realize this isn't the full jail. And now, you know, um, constraining, uh, the operators of your jail with operating at two different sites. You know, we need to take all that into consideration with them and talk about what that would cost and and the impacts of that.
Because I'm assuming that you wouldn't be able to use this kitchen to serve the existing downtown jail, right?
They already have one? Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think, but, you know, it's, anything's open at this point. We can talk about it and see if it makes sense. Also, Commissioner reminded me, we also have video arrangements worked into the intake center. So so that's another way to handle that situation. Sorry, Sandino.
No, all good. Um, so I, I think, um, what I heard you say is that you guys, this kind of came into focus about two weeks ago. So I think, um, convenient that we had a meeting today, uh, to give you feedback. What I would guess is that you'll have a lot more details a month from now than you had with two weeks, you know, kind of, uh, lead time. So the feedback I want to give, I think, is maybe a little bit more big picture on what you're proposing. Because I do, because I do think some of the things that come up like are things you're going to ultimately, the answer is going to be, yeah, we just got to look at it, right? So I think that, um, I understand and, um, that's kind of one of the reasons why I was asking the question earlier about what site work had been done. This definitely is, looks like a phased approach that will try and get us down the road with the resources that exist. And to me, that makes sense. Um, I think that what, uh, might be helpful, at least in my, in my thought process. When you're looking at these more finer details is, one of the things you said is, uh, I I do think centralizing the location, whether it's here. Um, I mean, centralizing location away from the existing jail. It creates the transportation thing that's going to probably be a thing anyway. So I'm not saying it's not something to worry about, but it's not like they're going to go to the existing county jail downtown and then come here and then go back, right? So it seems like you're saying that we would centralize those types of activities. And I think this, the thinking about how to use this, um, what I'll call it, like interstitial kind of time period, right? Um, uh, or this phased approach. Creating a space that moves these, um, the, the, uh, capacity for like diversion and those things forward is important. And what it, well, what it sounds like will maybe help to navigate the operating cost. We'll be looking at, you have one housing unit here. I mean, we'll be looking at maybe where in this intermediate sort of time period, the whole, things that might be like. Thought of as not holding spaces might be holding spaces, right, in the interim? So maybe it's not, we don't need 80 beds of housing, but it's like, uh, thinking about what 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 those holding spaces look like. It just, it just feels like if we're trying to get there, we might as well like get an outcome that we can live with for a little bit. Um, and that outcome would really be that we've centralized the criminal justice kind of intake process and been able to accommodate that. So I think about that as like, how many bus trips are going to be necessary out of here to the existing facility? If we know those facilities is going to exist and how does this existing infrastructure accommodate it? If that makes sense. So this makes sense, I think, uh, phased approach. It makes sense to start thinking about site work. Probably makes sense not to stabilize a site. I've had the misfortune of doing that before and, uh, it's just when you think the funding's around the corner, it's three years later and you're basically redoing a lot of that work. But the dirt work, the cut and fill, probably not changing. But the dirt work, the cut and fill, probably not changing. We know what the infrastructure needs are gonna be. So I love that idea. And then I love the idea of us being able to move forward on what I think is a critical output. Like we, the first down payment was we built the behavioral care. And I know that's been somewhat controversial for folks, but I think we need that. We need, we need an alternative that doesn't exist today. If the second piece is getting people out from being stuck handcuffed on benches, uh, in the existing county jail for hours on hours, just because there's a lack of capacity. That seems like also a step in the right direction and something that we can control. So if these spaces can really be thinking about how we make that kind of work in the near term, it seems like that would be a good outcome.
Downtown almost becomes overflow for this facility. I know it's not exactly how it is, but maybe kind of one way to think about it, that this is the start of the process.
Stacy, our committee has some questions, as you've heard. And I sense HOK's been working on this for a couple of weeks. Do we want to try to make a decision today? Is it necessary? Or do we want to give time to HOK to think some more and answer some of our questions at the next meeting? What would you recommend to us?
That's a good question, but a hard question. I think in order to be fair to HOK, if they're gonna do all this work, they need an amendment, uh, to their contract. Because it's, it's different than the contract they have right now. And in order to pay them for this service, um, I would prefer that we have some direction, um, shortly. You can always do a special meeting if you want, if you want to, don't, uh, don't want to make a decision today. But I always hate to have consultants do a lot of work, um, and then say, I'm sorry, I'm not paying you. Mike might appreciate that a little bit, having been, so.
Well, could, could this group simply express support for the concept and, and in, and encourage staff and architects and contractors to continue to examine it and bring it back more fully developed in some form? And I agree, you should pay them and that needs to live within the two hundred million dollar budget. If that's what it is, whatever, whatever we pay them is part of that overall budget.
And one question that's kind of a follow-up to what I asked before. How soon would we have to start on the, uh, two A piece? In order to make sure that we have spent those funds within the allotted time?
Well, we're probably really close to, um, being there already.
To like today.
You're saying today. Why would we not do that now?
Yeah, so that, that's, um, I, I, and I just want, and I wanted to make sure I'm hearing the, what's needed too well. So, um, I, I think that what I would be concerned is getting ahead of a more detailed evaluation on numbers and scope. But the idea of having the designers, well, let me say the team, cause those involved in this too. So idea of having the team move forward on evaluating this and like getting, and giving some clearance or, uh, I guess, uh, recommendation for you guys to move forward on, um, expanding the, the scope. Like, I guess it's like general conditions or wherever we are there. I think that makes sense. Let's get that ball moving. What I don't want to do is say like, yes, thirteen million dollars for a site work, kind of go forth, right? I think, cause I think there's still more detail to understand like what's in that, what's in the actual scope and what the numbers are.
Part of that evaluation is, when do we need to start spending that thirteen?
Sounds like now.
And, I mean, not today, but it might be in thirty or sixty days. And so bring us that and it seems like you might get encouragement.
So I think what we need to do is approve two A and two B with further detail to be provided with regards to expense and logistics and everything else, manpower. Is that correct?
Yes.
And as we discussed that, we have three commissioners' offices represented today. I think we're getting close to an idea. Did any of the offices or Chamber of Commerce have any ideas for us? It would be helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the Chair of Board of County Commissioners. Now keep in mind that I can only speak for District One. We are loving the discussions, uh, that we are hearing, but more time needs to be had among this body and among all the different bodies that make up Oklahoma, uh, County. For S District One, uh, we would love for more discussions to be had of how we are going to pay for the Oklahoma County Jail as a whole. Thank you.
I think we've had some fruitful discussions. I'm sorry, I'm with, uh, District Two, Commissioner Ryman's office, yeah, Charles Dodson. I think we've had some fruitful discussions. Miles knows most of the details on those, so I would think we would be to move forward expeditiously. I'll yield it forward to Miles.
Board, first of all, let me say thank you for all your hard work. You guys have put in yeoman's work on this and have been doing it for quite some time without any recognition. I appreciate everything that you've done to this point again. So let's, Sandino, a little bit about what does it look like to have an intake on this spot? One, we have to have an intake. We're gonna, we're gonna build a behavioral healthcare center here, so we're gonna do some sort of intake. What does that intake look like? Why wouldn't we build an intake that is much more humane, that is much more efficient, that includes diversion, that includes reentry programs, that includes taking an individual instead of making them better criminals? Let's start making them better citizens. So by doing this today, by, not necessarily today, let's just say the next thirty days. By putting this intake here, we start that process. We start, I was lucky enough earlier today to attend what we call a co-op graduation. And this is, this is a diversion court program. And this, this diversion court program started with one individual. Today, uh, it takes about a year to graduate. We had, uh, thirty-four graduates. So those are thirty-four people that did not enter our jail for over a year. Those are thirty-four people that did not wear our, enter our court systems, our DOC, and are now out tax-paying citizens, keeping families together, being productive citizens. That's what we're looking to do. That's what we're looking to do with this new facility. Our current facility does not do that. This would have short-term housing. Now, the new intake will allow for a process that currently takes two to three hours. Because during our process, you gotta remember, there's not a place to do medical evaluations. There will be here. We'll have that in our new intake. We'll have mental health evaluations. We do not have that now. We have to move these individuals up and down, hoping that elevators work. None of that will exist in our new situation. So we're creating a better, faster situation with these individuals. Also creates a better, faster situation for bondsmen, for team, for OR bonds, for any of those things that expedite these individuals getting back out, back out to their jobs and getting out of incarceration. So this intake here would expedite that, which is a great thing, cause we want these people. We do not want the ones that we're mad at locked away. We want the ones that we're scared of locked away. And unfortunately, what we do really well is locking up the ones that we're mad at with the ones that we're scared of, which creates worse people. Expedited booking process, reentry, uh, the new booking allows for better assessment and individuals will have, Department of Mental Health, uh, will be involved. The behavioral healthcare, you heard about the correctional community or, uh, the correctional people that I'm dealing with for healthcare. I'm also dealing with them not only on our behavioral health, but on our jail itself and looking at that RFP. Because today you're going through the process for the Behavioral Healthcare Center. In a couple of months, you'll go through that same process for the entire jail. So that'll be a bigger, much larger scope, different type of scope, but same type of thing that you're looking at today with behavioral health. One of the other things that this will have that we currently do not have are spots for arresting officers to actually do their, their work, to get their paperwork done, which expedites what our jail employees do. Because right now, what a lot of what our jail employees do is to assist those arresting agencies with their paperwork. Cause they don't have a place to sit down and actually do it. It's just, it doesn't exist in that jail. They never built it. This new one will have that. One of the other things that we will have is a public defender and a DA space, which will do a go, no-go for individuals inside this jail. Are we going to press charges? Is this person worth pressing charges? The public defender and the DA will both look at it and say, we're out or we're, we're gonna proceed forward. They'll have those discussions. We'll have arraignment, we'll have courtroom, a courtroom on-site for these things. All of this is to expedite individuals through the process, the, the initial booking, the initial touch. With that, we will have individuals that will need to come down here. Those eighty beds will be that. A lot of the individuals that are in jail today, that are going through the booking process, this is a wag, but probably two-thirds of those people don't go upstairs and aren't there for long term. They're going to, they're waiting for bond. They're waiting for their parents to come get them out. I mean, they're waiting, they're waiting for something, some sort of arraignment, anything of the sort. We'll have all of that on-site. It'll move much better. That's why I think releasing two hundred million dollars of bonds that the public entrusted us with. We've done the first tranche. We've gotten this far. The public entrusted us with this. I think we need to move forward with it. I do think there's some legwork that we need to continue to do. The two A, we're just a little short for the entire money on that. I think we have ten million. How much do we have? That's how much we have on hand. How much does this cost? I thought it cost thirteen. Two A costs thirteen, right? Okay. We're short. Put it easy. So we're short. One of the exciting things I want you to, to, to know, uh, appreciate District One coming up with this question. How are we gonna pay for it? District One, District Two, and District Three have all been in discussions, very in-depth discussions. And we've all come to an agreement that in spring, we will be seeking the public's input on fixing this. We, I do believe that we have a good solution. We have been working with city leaders. We have been working with county leaders. We have been working with business leaders, the chamber. Everybody has been involved in this. Everybody is on the same page, except for a couple of little things. And I think we're ready to proceed and I think we'll be proceeding in the spring. And I look forward to bringing that initiative to you guys and showing you the long-term fix that Oklahoma County has never had for a facility like this. Any questions? Sandino? Yeah, yeah.
Yes, what he said.
So it's less of a question, but there's more to reframe, cause I, uh, on Javier, cause I just want to make sure we're moving to action as well. But so the, so really what we're, and, and this goes back to something that Chair Steve, uh, mentioned. What's being proposed today is that we have these ideas about how to move parts of this project forward. And I think Stacy, you guys need from us to say like, yes, we think we should do, we should move these efforts forward. Well, it wasn't clear as I, we're, we're looking at committed funds around two A. But then also, why wait? This is my words, why wait on the other two hundred million dollars of bonding capacity opportunity that's approved out there to move forward and get, uh, with a plan for two B? With that, I'm, I'm.
No, 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 I can, I can answer. One, one of the things that I'm kind of hopeful about is we're getting ready to have a Fed rate adjustment, right? Hopefully, so that'll help us if it drops.
Yep.
So I, I don't anticipate it going up. Now, if it stays the same, then we're in the same boat that we are today. Do I think it's worth a couple of weeks to sit back and say, hold on? Let's see if this bad boy drops before we release funds. So yes, but I think in concept, you guys can sit there and say, hey, look, this is a great concept. I think you guys are on the right track. Keep moving forward, but hey, come back to us in a couple of weeks and say, this is where you're at.
Yeah, so I think we want to see the details, but I just want to make sure we got the right motion kind of in head. This makes sense. I mean, I'm, I, I think, I just want to make sure we're actually talking about the right action that we need to take to move it along.
I have one comment. What was interesting about Mr. Davidson's presentation? What he's suggesting, the intake to figure out which way to the ziggerzag. There's a lot more to it. And that you do this as soon as dang possible on humane reasons. And as you said, you believe that two-thirds of the potential guests don't go upstairs. And I think everyone in this room's objective is to do the best we can to keep people from going upstairs. And congratulations for today's graduate program of the diversion for a year that I was unaware of.
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll return back to Sandino.
No, that's it. I just, I, I, I was, I just wanted to make sure I understood, like, it, it's actually sound like two parts. It sound like the current obligated funds, like, yes, let's move forward, come up with a plan so we can spend those dollars. But I'm also hearing that what would be helpful is for you guys to kind of come back with more detailed proposal for all of the, everything's been obligated to date. So we actually just have, so at least we got a clear line of sight for everything, for the resources that are out there, what we're gonna do with them. So that, I, I wasn't hearing that earlier, but I, I think that's a commendable idea.
Yeah, I kind of like Ms. Garner's question, not necessarily about the kitchen, because we are gonna have to feed the eighty and then the sixty inside the behavioral health. And this is how we'll do it with that kitchen. Could you make it smaller? Well, clearly, it doesn't need to be as big as it would for twenty-four hundred people as it would for sixty. But you hit on something that was kind of interesting. I'm kind of curious of what one more pod would be, what that cost would be. And that would give us time to ask HOK, you guys as well. Hey, what would, what would that additional eighty to, uh, cause I think the one next to it is actually a hundred and twenty-bed pod, if I remember correctly. But that's just, there you go. So you could easily put, that, that's the question. You could bump to three hundred like that, but what does that cost? But yeah, and, uh, Mr. Thompson, me, two A is site work and kind of the, your question was the same. Two A is site work that affects the entire site for the entire project, not just. Uh, I was actually dealing with Stacy earlier this morning about, was that O N G, O G and E? Which, one of the Os, um, wants to do a easement along our east side that services not only our behavioral health, but also with our, um, our entire facility, so.
So okay, did you catch all that for a motion?
Yeah, so what is the motion? The motion is we express support for the concept outlined here of the two A and two B and recommend further inquiry into that and look forward to hearing more detail as it, um, becomes available.
Yeah, and I think just a defined scope for the thirteen million. What all does that include and not include? It sounds like not all of it, but a lot of it will be. And then, yeah, differentiating between that phase two B, what does that include and not include? And then just having that outline and then have a price associated with that would be ideal.
Yeah, I think that's implicit in the, bring us more details.
Should I ask for an amendment to the contract? Would y'all recommend an amendment to the contract so we can pay HOK to actually do this work?
Yeah, so that's what I was trying to clarify. Cause I think that's, to me, I mean, so we can, we can, we can, we can give the expression that we supported. I guess that's what I was trying to understand is, yes, I think we should, we should amend HOK's contract to include, uh, this, the, the design on this scope of work, right?
Let's do two motions, one expression of support. And we can do a second one that says, hey, these guys to do what we just recommended you do.
Okay, so I guess another question. Um, yes, proceed, but also can you define for us in concept what that idea looks like? What the cost associated with that would be and the cost of your additional detail to the work? All kind of broken out for us, you can kind of see it all, but yes, to all of that.
Whatever number HOK has in mind, they just need to cut it in half and all approve it.
Second.
Good thinking.
Two-thirds would be nice.
So do we have a coherent motion on the first piece?
No, I apologize. I'll need to.
So it's a motion of support for project two A and two B.
Okay, we like this idea. Let's proceed with doing more feasibility study on what's included in each of these phase A, phase two A, phase two B, and costs associated, including design broken out.
There you go, there's your motion, push your button.
I just have a question. So we're asking.
Do I have a second?
Before, before the second.
Okay, we're not even have a second. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, cause I have a question.
Okay.
When you say feasibility study, so that part, you're just studying and bringing back what you actually believe the process will be with the cost assigned to it. But it doesn't necessarily, when we're asking you to do this feasibility, doesn't actually give you permission to do it. You just gotta come back and study it. I'm trying to get to.
Well, I want, yeah, I want to do that one. So I think we're gonna do that one next.
So what you're saying is you want to do two motions. One motion, we like. One motion, we like this idea, let's explore it further. The second motion will be, please come back to us with.
I think, I, go ahead, Steve, sorry.
Define scope and cost.
Oh, I was going to say, I, I, I think what's necessary is for us to um, authori-, like give a recommendation to the VLC to uh, extend HOK's contract. And I'm not sure if Flintville has a role in this, or maybe it's already covered. But to extend those contracts to cover the, the evaluation of this scope of work. Like that's a technical thing, not the support thing.
You're modifying current.
Yes.
It's an amendment.
Well, okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Modify.
I, I.
Modify.
Yeah.
I second Heather's motion.
Oh.
Yep.
I think we're all trying to say the same thing.
I do too. I know, I, I mean, I, I'm going to take it back to the board and say, hey, these guys are in support of us exploring 2A and 2B.
Correct.
Simple as that.
Which means releasing more money. That means giving them a budget. That means showing them what it exists. And then giving options on top of that. So yeah, that's what I am hearing. And then she will clarify that when she goes back and watches the film.
So Cassie, can you read the motion for us, please?
I will have to review it.
Okay, you'll figure it out.
Yes.
Okay, discussion from the committee? I have a discussion item. On 2A, would we be comfortable saying to Stacy and the team, times of the essence to have it spent by next spring? We trust you guys to figure it out and go. Do we need to revisit?
I think they already know that though.
I think that's, may or may not be, yes. It's a second motion if it exists.
I don't think we need to be redundant.
But what I heard in the motion we have now is to go study 2A and 2B and come back to us.
I mean, right now, it's not defined what exactly is in it. I know that you're close and you kind of get, you have an idea, but I don't know that you've actually put a pen to paper on what you think is in that scope. Correct me if I'm wrong.
I think the motion says what it needs to.
Right.
Yeah, I think so.
I don't think in the next 30 days, we need to do any more than that.
No, and if we do, we can call a special real quick and get that done.
Stacy, if we wait a month, we, we just said, well, this motion says, we're interested, go look at it. If officially, we don't say go on 2A for a month, is that okay with you?
Is there an option to send supplemental information that can be approved via email or correspondence in some way?
Unfortunately, not with open meeting laws being the way they are. I would hate to get you guys in trouble with that. And part of this entire process is to keep everything above board, so. Doing cost estimations and what we really need to know is what our bond deadline is.
And we've got about, Josh says about eight to nine months worth of work. And the end of May is 10 months from now, so we got about 30 days. And that leaves him no float time.
But I don't think we have a. Do we have enough of a plan of what 2A is to approve it? I guess, oh, I don't mistrust anyone.
Well, I think all the grading, uh, rough grading is certainly already set.
Yeah.
So we can start on that pretty quick. The utilities are pretty obvious where they've got to go. It's just, it's a lot of, lot of work. It's a big site.
I think what we need to move on is approval for the, the continuation of their work. Details can be provided two weeks, a month from now. We just need to make sure that we're approving 2A, 2B. And then we're making an amendment to the agreement to include pay for additional work as required by HOK.
I think we're making this more complicated. Heather's motion is to, to support this thing. Let's, let's vote on it. If we want to have a second motion to authorize the 2A, if we want to have a third motion to pay them, let's do that after that. But, but let's get this thing off, I send or one way or the other.
2A and 2B are together, right?
We are recommending further investigation in 2A and 2B, period. I seconded the motion.
Okay. I voted already, so.
And, and probably we will need an August 19th meeting now, if they need a stronger recommendation on 2A.
Yeah, once we can get some numbers and get a scope of work. I mean, even, even the limited scope that it is currently. I mean, I, I mean, Sandino, Javi, Mike, there's, I don't know who all has been involved with construction, but we know what site work is and we know what has to be done. That is a very broad term. And to your point, we don't know, mission creep and scope creep can happen like that. And I think you're absolutely right, getting this written down and showing that this is what the scope that you're about to spend 10 to 13 million dollars on. Which in the grand scheme of things, doesn't sound like a lot, but that's still a lot of money. So yeah, I think, I think being very diligent with the taxpayers' dollars is smart. Getting that scope of work is smart, so.
I have no other comments. Other comments from the committee?
There is a motion and a second on the floor. I'm, do have four votes that have been cast and three that have not.
I'm just checking, is there any other comments from the committee? Is there any comments from the public? Then we're ready to vote. Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Do you need a motion from us on paying the consultants and contractors? Or can you guys make that happen? Okay.
I, I think we can make it happen without you guys. Would I like to do it with you guys?
If you'd go for us to give a recommendation.
I would, yeah, go ahead. You know, so I'd like to move that uh, we amend uh, the uh, existing contracts to uh, accommodate work on the scopes of work or evaluating 2A and 2B.
I think that's perfect.
Second, is there any discussion from the committee? Any discussion from the public? All right, let's vote, please. Okay, thank you.
Last question. And this is, and again, I just want to make sure we're, we're sort of clear about the intent. Because it's uh, is, well, we, I guess we'll come back and talk about the 200 million. It seems like it's less of a clear and present thing, especially considering sort of present condition. So don't need to really speak on that at this point to move this along.
Yeah, I, I would, again, the rate being what it is, I will tell you that um, our maximum bid that we have right now is roughly 700 million dollars. That's going to go away in September. There's no way around that. I tried to think that if we did the 200 million release and start the project, then it was a deal. But then they were like, no, it's a phased approach and that's your contract and we have to redo it anyway. So um, that September number will probably increase. Just looking at the two years previous and then even by the conservative number of 4%, it's probably going to go up about 76 to 90 million dollars. Just so we're keeping the grand scheme of things in the book, so. But I appreciate everything you've done.
Okay. Are we done with item six? Possible action regarding new jail bond funds. Any other comments? Okay, we'll leave item six and go to citizen participation. Is there any citizens and participation comments? All right, any board comments? Do I need a motion to adjourn? Cassie, may I have a motion, please? Second, uh, one moment.
My name is Tom Gorth and I've worked with Deacon Roy, fourth site, uh, for several years now as a ministry there. As you know, we've been out of the detention center for about a year and a half due to staffing issues. We would love to get back in there, as you know, Deacon Roy deeply cares for the gentlemen in that detention center. And so, as do I. And uh, we'd love to figure out how to get back in there as soon as we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Any other public comments? Board comments? Motion, do we have a motion and a second to adjourn? Thank you.